Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Council to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Tomgrotty.
Here.
Alderman Tedgrotty.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
All are present.
The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing, and it's for a special use permit at 546 Broad Street. Director Schrader, would you like to tell us about the project?
Certainly. So, 546 Broad Street is the Old Grog Restaurant. So their back parking lot on the north side of the building is kind of in disrepair. They came to us and are looking to basically just replace that existing asphalt parking lot to improve that. According to our code, we do require, once you hit a certain threshold, that it does come into conformance with our current standards within our zoning code. Unfortunately, due to the site constraints, being kind of in an older neighborhood with being able to still function as a parking lot and use a parking lot, they're not able to meet our requirements. So with that, we do have an exception in there that through a special use permit, the parking lot can be improved, as provided it is granted that approval. So this did go in front of the City Planning Commission at their previous meeting and was approved, and again, they are looking at just improving that parking lot and then adding some additional landscaping near the building.
So at this point, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak on that matter, they could. And seeing no one, we'll call the public hearing to a close and move on to report of department head, staff, and consultants. We have the minutes and communications this evening. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenick.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we receive minutes A through I and communications J through M.
So motion and a second by Alderman Grotty. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item F is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? If we could get your name and address for the record, sir.
Yeah, my name is Adam Westbrook. I'm the city attorney for the City of Nina, 211 Walnut Street in the City of Nina. I came today to...
Oops.
Thanks, Adam.
I think I turned it off on you, Adam. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I came today to talk about the deputy fire chief position, particularly in my role as city attorney because of my involvement in the decision. So, on August 25th, the Fire Commission met to discuss the filling of this position. At that position, Commissioner Keahan brought up the fact that Manassas has a 20-mile requirement for any director 20-mile residency requirement, and thought that, given the way that the position was written, that could be an issue if the person we hire lives more than 20 miles away. As I'm sure all of you are aware, Deputy Chief Voss lives in Amherst, which is definitely more than 20 miles away, and he's been the deputy chief for over six years now. So trying to combat that so it wouldn't happen again, Director Cale, who's the human resources director for the City of Nina, Chief Cologne, and myself met to talk about, oh, well, what can we do to make sure that Manassas can find someone who fits that requirement? And it was discussed how the EOC director is not a statutory thing. It is someone that is appointed in Nina. The mayor is the person who appoints it. I'm not sure how Manassas appoints their EOC, but it is the council and/or the mayor who appoints the EOC representatives and the director. It used to be your health director here in Manassas. It then got switched over to the fire department. So we said, oh, well, a great easy solution would be to say, the chief is the EOC for both the cities of Nina and Manassas, or his designee. So that if and when it ever happens that Chief Cologne retires in 10 years, or however long that's going to be, if the new chief lives more than 20 miles away, Manassas could say, hey, listen, you live too far. We want you to appoint this person who lives in the city of Manassas, or whatever that place may be. So we thought, wow, this is a great solution to help Manassas. Called Attorney Captain, said, if you have any questions about it, give us a call back. We thought we were all good. A point of clarification, I watched your meeting last week, and there were a couple things that were said that just simply are not true. One, as Attorney Captain pointed out, based on the merger agreement, all fire personnel are employees of the City of Nina. This was done because of how the Wisconsin retirement system is. The state said you can only be employees of one city. You can't be employees of both cities. So it was decided long before I started that they were all going to be employees of the City of Nina. The City of Nina does not have a residency requirement for any of our personnel. Our police department does have a residency requirement of, I think it's 20 miles, it might be 30 miles, of our police department, but as you are all aware, our fire department does not have a residency requirement for our firefighters. So because the City of Nina doesn't have a residency requirement, there was no 20-mile distance put on any of the personnel for the City of Nina, including this job description. We follow all of the City of Nina's personnel matters and our policies, so that's why there's no residency requirement there. There is a statute that talks about residency. This was changed back in 2013, I believe. It used to be that a municipal government could require anyone that works for them to live within a certain distance. In 2013, the state legislature said, no, 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 no. You can only require fire, police, or emergency personnel to live within a 15-mile radius, or more. It doesn't have to be 15, but 15 is the furthest or closest you can make it. But that only applies to them. So we thought that by doing this, making it so that you can choose whoever you want to be the EOC director, would be the easiest. The biggest myth that I want to dispel is that we did this, or the Fire Commission did this, because they know who they wanted to hire. This conversation happened between the chief, myself, and Director Cale without any conversation of who this person may be or applicants. This job has not even been posted yet, let alone had conversations of who it would be. So I'm not sure who you think it is, or who you thought we were going to hire, but I can promise you that that was not at all a part of our conversation. It truly was, the current deputy chief lives more than 20 miles away. We thought that it was important for Manassas for that EOC director to live within 20 miles. So we thought by making the language change to the chief or his designee, it would allow Manassas to appoint whoever they wanted to that position without having to continuously change the job description. The last thing I just want to point out, as Attorney Captain already pointed out, the Fire Commission, and only the Fire Commission, have the power of changing job descriptions and hiring employees. Not Nina's council, not Manassas' council. That's not the role for the council. That's what the Fire Commission does. The councils have what's called the purse strings, right? The councils control what positions exist, but only the commission has the ability to control the job descriptions and who gets hired or fired. So this was not the Fire Commission trying to be sneaky or shady. This was a conversation that myself, as city attorney, Director Cale, as the human resources director, Chief Cologne had about how we could help the City of Manassas ensure that your EOC director lived within 20 miles. I understand from watching last meeting that that clearly did not happen, as we had hoped it would. So as you know, commission voted to reverse everything, send it back to exactly how it used to be, but I would just like to point out that doesn't fix the problem. Because this job description says the deputy chief is the EOC for Manassas, but that doesn't mean that the Fire Commission has to hire someone that lives within 20 miles. So if they choose to hire someone that lives 25 miles away, Manassas is still going to be in the same position that it is currently, where you would have to appoint someone else or not abide by the rule as the past six years have been. So Alderman Nichols came to the meeting, so she got a little more backstory at this last Fire Commission meeting. If at any time you do have any questions, I'm happy to answer them if the board allows it. Otherwise, Chief Cologne is also very well-versed, as is Attorney Captain. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to have items separated this evening? Alderman Sevenick.
Thank you, Mayor. So, item two, item three, item four, item five, item six, item eight, item nine, and item 10. So we got two items on your consent agenda.
So is there, does anyone wish to have any other items separated? Is there a motion for items two and seven?
What?
I'm sorry, one and seven. Alderman Sevenick.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that the council approve consent agenda items one and seven.
So motion and a second by Alderman Tedgrotty. Item one is the common council minutes from September 7th, and item seven is the street use application for the St. Joe 5K walk run. If we could have a roll call vote, please. Whoops.
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item two? Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to recommend for the change order to Summers Construction Company, contract unit number 2021-06. That's for the Balden Reconstruction, and it's a deduct of $3,807.24. Final payment.
Is there, there's a motion and a second. This is for item number three. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Oh, I read the wrong one.
Yep. We'll go back to item two.
Okay.
That's fine. So any order, you're the boss.
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item two? Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion for the recommend the approval for the payment to Northeast Asphalt Inc., contract unit number 2021-10. That's for the street construction and rehabilitation, $481,198.50. Payment number three.
Second.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item four? Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. Make the motion to recommend the approval for the payment to Summers Construction Company, contract unit number 2021-06. That's the Balden Reconstruction, in the amount of $33,209.38. Final.
Second.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item five? Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. Make the motion for the recommend, recommend the approval of the change order to Farner Asphalt Sealers LLC, contract unit number 2021-04. That's for the aesthetic concrete pavement crack sealing, various city streets, an add of $32.87. That's final.
Second.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item six?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Make the motion to recommend the approval for the payment, Farner Asphalt Sealers LLC, contract unit number 2021-04. That's for the aesthetic concrete pavement crack sealing for the various city streets in the amount of $75,033.56. That's final.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item eight? Alderman Grotty.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion for adding the black brick accents along the facade of the operator's house on the new Racine Street Bridge with a dollar amount not to exceed $5,000.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenick.
Thank you, Mayor. Wasn't there something more that we were supposed to add to this also? Were we not looking at something on top of the...
Not at this point.
At this point, later on, possibly? All right.
So we did discuss the underbridge lighting and the parks.
Right, and we're not ready for that yet?
Yeah. No, we're not ready at this point.
So the other thing that, and if I'm not in order, or if it's not germane, but we did receive a letter from a constituent concerned about, and I think it's a great idea, of putting up something along the cement wall, either stamped brick or welcome to downtown Manassas or something like that. So if we could explore that, I would like for us to look at that. Are you familiar with this or not? Then I'll talk to you after the meeting. Thank you. Are you... Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I did reach out to the person in question and explain to her that that funding came through the DOT. We kind of had to fight for that. They were going to take it out of our budget. If they would've made us pay for that wall, we would have nothing left. It's sort of bare bones right now, but there are elements that could be added to it. So something in the future again, and there may be monies yet that we could use within our budget to dress that up somewhat. So...
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item nine? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve filling the deputy chief position as soon as possible.
Here's a motion and a second. I'm not sure why it would be the wrong number nine. Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to approve filling of the deputy chief position. Alderman Sevenick.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the city attorney from Nina coming here. I also appreciate the fact that he has made a conscious decision to live within a few miles from his own city hall. I respect him for that. One thing that, everything that you said is completely understood, and we know that, okay? One of my main points was the fact that we don't have to fill this position. That's something you, we realize that we don't pick the person, but we don't have to fill or decide to have this position. That needs to be clear, and I'm in favor of doing that. But I'm also in favor that we stick with our policy of at least 20 miles. And when that got shifted, it appeared as though they wanted to shift it so they could hire someone outside the 20-mile radius. You're telling me tonight you were trying to do it so that you would honor Manassas' 20-mile radius. I didn't see it that way. See, because you're looking to already give it to someone within the 20-mile radius, but before the deputy, you're changing the position's responsibility, the position's responsibility of being the person for these, in case there is emergency in this community, and I think that's important. That's why I think that that person, if you guys are okay with taking responsibilities away from that position, then that salary should reflect that also then, because that's less of responsibility that that individual's doing. But yeah, I think it's very important, because you know what? Let's say tomorrow we get a huge tornado, okay? And we ended up hiring someone that lived 50 miles away. How would that reflect our community? Why did we hire someone who's in charge, lives 50 miles away, and he's fishing somewhere? So I just think that personally, this position should be somebody who lives close. That's all. All these other things about state statutes, I mean, I have it right here, too. And for emergency personnel, it's 15 miles. For the, what you had stated before about those who are in higher position, I guess, like department heads or... But anyways, so I just wanted to clarify that. I appreciate you coming this evening. I don't think any of us actually have had the opportunity to meet you. You're the newest person over there, and you're probably going to, in our city attorney's absence, you may have to fill in in the future. So I just want to clarify that. You've got to understand where we were coming from, or some of us were coming from. I just strongly feel that this emergency position person should live as close as possible to Nina Manassas, period. And when that got shifted away from that position, because we weren't talking about the chief's position or someone else, we were only talking about the deputy chief's position. So just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. You got the wrong one up there, though.
I know, it's not edited in my teletext system.
Oh, okay.
I have to edit very quickly.
So is the agenda outside different again?
Yes, it is. Is this missing?
The one that's online...
Well, because it was, that's why it was highlighted.
Yeah. Yep, the one that's online is correct. That's posted.
From last council meeting, I'm going to use the online one this time, because the last one was all...
So, there we go.
Motion carries eight zero.
We have a motion for item 10. Alderman Schmidt.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to approve the special use permit for 546 Broad Street, parcel number 1-00072-02, finding that the maintenance of the parking lot decreases the nonconformity of the existing parking lot with the following condition: Prior to the issuance of building permits, the site improvement agreement must be recorded for the proposed development.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenick.
So it says prior to issuing of building permits, is there plans to... Could I ask for unanimous consent to hear from the...
Well, Director Schrader could tell you what the plan is.
Well, she can come up, too. I wouldn't mind hearing. Are there plans for some changes, like... No, so we would just require, you know, so I guess the term building is probably used more as a permit, so it would need an excavation, possibly an erosion control permit, but there, I don't think there's any plans for building at this time, correct? Yes. So just the parking lot. Would this be the same, let's say that, you know, the other part of your building, that the more open area, the second part? If they decided to expand or something in there, would that need a special permit or something to do that? Or could they just come in and get a permit to make those changes?
We would have to take a look at what specifically the use would be, and I'd have to take a look back at that and follow that up.
I mean, if it was the same uses, restaurant, bar?
I'd have to take, I'd have to take a look back. Thank you.
And then also, too, I guess my question is for the owners. Was there, I know there's landscaping talked about, but along the tree fence line areas, are there any plans for like arborvitas or something, just kind of just screen it?
I'm open to ideas, so I did think of anything I have, but I am more than willing to do something like that.
Just think, I need to, Mayor, I guess James can't hear, so he wants, can you come to the mic? If that's okay with the rest of the council.
So what's on the plans is basically...
I know what's on the plans, Mayor.
Basically re-asphalting the area that's currently asphalted. I just, I just turned it on, and then you turned it off again.
You turned them on.
Oh, I have no idea.
Or did I turn, I'm turning Sam's on and off. I'm sorry.
So for you asking about the arborvitas, I am open to ideas. Our main concern was to, because currently the parking lot is angled towards the building, and so when it rains, things like that, the back of the business inside, the door is actually getting flooded. On top of, the parking lot has lots of divots from all the garbage trucks going in and out, and if we just resurface it, we're going to have to resurface it every year because of the dump trucks. So we want to actually get all of it dug up, graded away from the building the correct way, have a dumpster pad, and then the idea of the arborvitas would be a good idea to help block, but I'm totally open to ideas.
Well, you've done, you've done some nice things already in the front and around the building.
Thank you.
You have a very good business, and I appreciate you making improvements. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, do we have any plans of replacing that crappy-looking fence? Putting a new fence up for the constituents that live right next to the parking lot?
Yeah, and I believe that fence belongs to the neighbors to the north. So we would, we could take a look at it, and we would have to write them in order if it's beyond maintenance to correct that issue.
Okay. I mean, if we're doing all that work, I mean, half of it, or quarter of it in the front of it, you know, I stopped there and looked at it today, and there were two trucks parked. So at nighttime, because that fence is broken down, that we're hoping that, you know, that parking lot's going to get used a lot. So my concern is about, you know, we were concerned about the condos over there and the bridge, people shining lights in there, and we took care of that for them. So I'm wondering if you're worried, or not worried then, about, say, two trucks that sit up high, shining right into those people's house?
This is the first, the question has been brought up. We can certainly, again, work with the owner of the Old Grog. Again, they've been very, very great to work with and see what we could do about that fence. Again, if it is the neighbor's fence, it would be considered a front yard, so if it is a lower sitting fence, then that would be the reason why that would be a lower sitting fence. But we can, we can take a look back at it, and again, as, you know, the owner mentioned about the arborvitas, possibly we can work with the neighbor, see if Rosita can work with the neighbor to make that happen.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, is there any minimum requirements for the landscaping?
Minimum requirements for landscaping? So we do have, again, requirements for setbacks and things of that nature to residential properties. It would be a 10-foot setback, so that's the reason we're, we have this special use permit in front of us, because if, if we were to enforce a 10-foot setback, they basically wouldn't have any parking. You know, it would just be a in-and-out for loading or deliveries and the dump, and the trash removal. So again, that's why we are looking at this as a special use permit to make those exceptions. Now, technically, you know, per a new development, they do require a landscape area around the building. They will be putting that in as well. So I think it's a three-foot landscaping area north of the building between the parking lot to add to some landscaping there.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item I is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll for September 3rd through 16th. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of September 3rd through September 16th, 2021, in the amount of $1,210,000.
through September 16th, 2021, in the amount of $1,210,764.25.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is the beverage operators licenses. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2021 through 2023 licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated September 16th, 2021.
Is there a second? So motion a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item three is a seatbelt enforcement traffic grant. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to accept and spend the Manasha Police Department alcohol and seatbelt enforcement traffic grants.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Schmidt. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols, do you have discussion?
Yes, thank you. Chief Steika, could you just let everyone know more about what this is?
Sure, this is the same traffic-related grant that the council has approved the last several years. Basically, the grant is done county-wide, and the Winnembeau County Sheriff's Department acts as the fiscal agent for it and divides up the pot of money of approximately $50,000 between all the agencies in the county. Our share of it has been, it'll be approximately $20,000 next year. So this really just helps to supplement our traffic-related efforts throughout the city as traffic continues to be the number-one complaint that, that people have. So we're able to assign people on over to them dedicated to those issues in the community.
Thank you.
You bet.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, is this the same one we had earlier this summer, or is there a different one we had earlier this summer?
So there's two different ones. The other one that you're referring to that popped up, that was specifically a speed-related grant, and that one was for the summer months. This one is alcohol and seatbelt enforcement. Those are the primary focuses, but obviously, you know, it's not like you're going to stop a speeder if you're doing the traffic enforcement during that time. So this one is the one that actually runs 12 months or through the full fiscal year for DOT, and that other one was a supplementary one that the county was awarded.
Do we use overtime for this grant?
Yep, overtime is used, and that is reimbursed with the fringe benefits from the, from the grant itself. There is a 25% match, but we do the match by the other traffic enforcement we normally already do. We just document that and submit that as the match funds that we do as part of the grant.
And we okay this tonight? When does this go into effect?
I'm sorry, they okay this?
When does this go into, when does this go into effect?
This one, no problem. This one goes through October through next September.
October.
October of this year through September of next year.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. Make the motion to accept the R-36-21, it's a resolution authorizing the application for road project grant funding from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, introduced by myself, Alderman Langdon.
So motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item N is public comments. I'll turn the right mic on for you this time, Rosita.
Is it on?
Yep, you're good.
Okay. I just want to thank everybody, because I know it's been a really long process trying to do this parking lot. So everybody that's kind of helped us and gave us suggestions and things like that. So thank you. And again, the fence is the neighbor's fence, but I will certainly talk to her and see if she's got any concerns. She's actually a customer of ours, so I can totally reach out to her.
Makes it easier.
Yeah, so, and we've actually discussed her fence previously, so I'll reach out to her and get in touch with everybody that needs to know, so. So thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, do we have a motion to adjourn? Second? All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.